Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Missy.
Um, me and Clint, um, everything's going well. We're still, we're, um, working on schedule. Everything looks, looks good. We're all excited. They're doing the waterproofing and they had to cover up the side of plastic. And I'll have to heat that because of the waterproofing can't get lower than twenty-five degrees. So. That's what that's all about. Everything going like it's supposed to is for the excitement. So. That's that. Um, the new CEO will, um, take over. It will be here on. February third, which is a week from Monday. So my last day on, as I've said before, will be on the twenty eighth. They are, uh, we're in the process of planning a, a meet and greet for the public. Don't know a date yet, but we will have, you know, some kind of public meeting for him. And then they are also planning, uh, a retirement for me at a later date. So. Anyway, that's kind of what we, what we're doing. Um, looking at going through a lot of our old. Land documents, you know, because we own pasture land and we own the crock land. And, um, just getting all the ducks in a row. I have little totes lined up and, you know, just making sure that. We know what we're doing, what we're doing. I don't have any, I don't have anything else that I can think of. Um, do you guys have any concerns or questions?
Well, no, it's not. What do you have? What was the price for the email?
It's four thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty cents a month. And when we started. It was. Let's see, two thousand. Twenty-three is four thousand five hundred and seventy-six. Twenty-two. It was, when we started, it was four thousand four hundred and twenty-one. So, four thousand, and that, so those are the three different years.
So roughly for the three months, we'll be fourteen thousand, two hundred and eight dollars and forty-eight cents. For October, November, December.
It's a wonderful tool.
Oh, my gosh, yes. It's very, very, very good.
It saves lives, literally saves lives. I see where, um. Hillsborough actually, you know, put one in their.
Really?
I knew they were thinking about it.
Will they have it all amplified, sis, or?
They usually just do two.
Yeah.
As far as being able to hook up.
Is, is there any US part of the hospital or part of the county?
County, right.
Looks great. Yeah. I highly, highly, highly recommend one of those children. You know, this thing, um, comfort, you know, for nursing and for. Then levels and for doctors. I mean, they all appreciate it. So.
Yeah.
Very great.
They're one of the two.
Okay. Well, appreciate your time, what you do. Carry on. I guess that's what. Thank you, guys.
All right, I guess we're just going to recess till ten fifteen. When next up's Dan. Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Morning. How you doing, Bob?
I'm doing.
Good, good.
I see you.
I'm not the scratch. Somebody else is the scratch.
You're the professional.
I'm the professional.
That's awesome. You like the blues?
Yep, the blues look sharp.
They do. When I'm training firefighters, I put up a, a picture. In one of my trainings, it's got, uh. A cop in a black uniform and a cop in a white uniform. And I ask, which one's the good cop? Which one's the bad? And they always say the black one's the bad cop and the white one's the good cop. And I look, and I look at the faces. They're both the same dude. Yeah. So it just makes that much, much different to how you present yourself.
It does. I think he broke his foot walking on Sadist transmission.
He what?
He think he broke his, Brett thinks he broke his foot working on Sadist transmission.
Oh, you know, for that too?
Do I need to file workman's comp through you or no?
Or do it through Sadist. Oh, no. That's gotta be painful.
Yeah, people was freaking out.
Definitely. Yeah. Yeah, I stepped on a leg one time and broke my foot. It was not, it'd be an experience.
I think he said he dropped it. Can you be on it?
What?
Drop, can you be on it? I don't know why they would that do.
It's hard to tell them pretty together.
We call, do I need to go to the doctor? Like it just happened. Give it a little bit.
Yeah, you want to go in, you knew this was gonna happen?
Yeah, we can.
Come back? Okay.
All right. So did you guys get a chance to read over the minutes from January fourteen?
It's all good. I think it'd be good to, uh, we haven't filled that, that position that heavily for the, uh. What we tabled last week.
Right.
I think it'd be good when Les comes in, ask him, pay anybody from his department to do that.
Yeah.
From Les's department? If anybody, because that, that's kind of the alley there.
Yeah.
The. Uh, what is it called? The, uh. Point somebody for that and. When Les comes in, we can ask if anybody in his department would like to do that. Could be anybody, couldn't it? Dan? Bye. I have staying. Just my name is on it. Um.
Morning.
Yes.
Nelson Robbie. We're gonna look for lessons out there. Then I have the, uh, beer licenses for Cowboy Junction. We just have an occupational license and then two retail licenses. We just need the chairman's signature on. Those. And they're just paperclips. I kind of have them like. Just these ones. I think I need your signature on. Just trying to pay, keep everything paperclip together. And then I think just these ones too.
Okay.
That one and then the one behind it. And then I'll sign and seal the rest of it. Yep. The rest is just my paperwork. No, you're okay. Try to keep it all together here.
Okay, Dan, it's ten fifteen. You hear that?
Um. I apologize that I get the report from you, you practice earlier. Um. Was been last week and actually I was good planning on doing it. Monday until Friday when I realized that, uh, Monday was holiday. So. Uh, hope you had a chance to read through it. Some of the highlights. Um. The, uh. CDBG webinar. Um. For the, uh, next round, it's gonna include the human centers. Details on it, but. They're gonna have three different options. I guess they've had architects put plans together for three different options. And one of them includes gym space and equipment, indoor pool, water and so forth. Where maybe an option for the practice gym committee as well as the rec center committee. Uh, which in the past it wasn't. This is a, a, a new program within the community of home block grant program that they're operating this year. And as Karina learns more about it, should be provided this information. I'm gonna have her meet with the. The, uh, leadership Graham County, the rec center is, is one of their, or is their project for this year. As well as, uh, uh, Carolyn Long and the practice gym committee. Uh, and then the other folks that are interested in that. That's kind of a highlight. You never know with this administration. What they're gonna change in terms of block grant programs from year to year. Um. Let's see. Housing committee, we had a lengthy meeting, um. Looking at. Finishing up as far as legal costs. Uh, I'll be looking for about, I'll be between eight and ten thousand dollars. Grant funds, uh, got several possibilities there to complete. The legal aspects for the rural housing and tenant district, uh, for the Sunset Boulevard project. Um, the way no developer moves forward with that. Uh, we've go, we've got to have, uh. Some upfront money either through. The developer, the city. Modern income housing grant. The third option, I don't remember what it was. Anyway. Uh, how the RHID works is, again. The infrastructure costs, including the expansion of Sunset Boulevard and. Extensive sewer lines, water lines and so on have to be paid for upfront. And then the increased revenue from property tax over a period of years goes back to pay those costs. And Karina's gonna check and see if the city has interest in doing that. Um, they said no interest at all at the bond issue to pay for it. Nobody, you know, I, I have one developer that. Thought maybe the bank would loan on, well, no bank's gonna loan on a street that's gonna be owned by the city. They're even collateral to. To recoup on that and no way to pay it back. So we're still, still looking at the possibilities there. I'm looking for outside investors as well. Um, met with Mike Downey and Chuck Patel. Um, two friends of mine in Hayes that I've done some work for in the past. And, and. Both of them are tied up with other projects and hey, right now, when I put the bug in there, because they work with pet industrials all the time. Uh, on housing projects, we can get some interest from some. Some deeper pockets in, in Ellis County to help us out and they'll make money and, and the, the community as well. Um, exciting part, met with Bev Stafford. We awarded her the Grant County Community Volunteer of the Year. From Primm and we'll get that plaque up, uh. Uh, next to the other ones in the hallway coming up and she'll be on there with Carla from last year. Um. Oh, verified, uh, I didn't. I had to verify new county attorney's contact information and I provided that to Karina. Um, this is later on. With her discussion with the Economic Innovation Center as well, the developers founders, founded and secured developer. Could be right here, could be Corey Semenow. But if, uh, we still need some investors within that and. Uh, checking to see if, if the county attorney. And that's I called Kendra about, she said she wasn't sure. So Karina will talk to him direct. If his fees would be separate to what he's being paid as county attorney to sign off on the county's portion of it. Or if that would be an additional cost. So she's gonna find that out. Uh, also called business with Wes Bander, who I've known for a long time. Inquiring any interest he may have in the Sunset Boulevard housing project. Uh. He said that, uh, without backing of a bank for, as a, as a builder or the builder and, uh. Also the definite need for an RHID for the, the covered costs of infrastructure. I see what we, we done. And, uh, I sent that information along to Carl, who's, who's been looking at it as a. Uh, member of the housing committee. Um, questions on anything? What's going on so far?
Not right now, Dan.
Okay. Um, notes I had, I wanted to check back with you on. I didn't know if you'd had time already or, or not. No rush as far as, uh, policy on revel for the community center. For various entities.
Yeah, we were supposed to get together and talk about that.
He went to the new commissioner's school last week.
Um, not a problem. I mean, there's no rush on it because the, uh, practice GM Carolyn Long. Was looking at setting up a meeting and, and, uh. Late January, that got changed because too many people involved in ballgames and such. So she gave me some dates in February and I told her I'd like to wait until late February. Uh, I think this is a project with, with the possibilities now, the block grant program. Uh, other possibilities and, and working towards that with those two committees. As well as leadership Graham County. I'd like to have my successor on place to be. Up on everything. So I'm trying to put that meeting off until such a time as we know where we're at. So no rush on that on my part. I just wanted to check back. So I'll leave that on the, on the, uh, on the notes. Check back with you. Um, giving you the. Um. Resume. For Stephanie Semenow. Um, that's the only own resume I received. And wanted to see if, if having looked through it, if you wanted some time to discuss it or. Set up interview for possibly next Tuesday.
Like what, right? Well, I agree with you. Yeah. Run it for a while, get it discussed, give it all, get it more.
Okay. And without any discussion that. You want to make me aware of in terms of the, the, uh, budget options I presented last week? Any more discussion in terms of, um. I mean, I, I, right now I guess the budget based upon a full-time coordinator. But, uh, any input from. Those that I provided last time, they had one, two and three options. And again, it can be reconstructed on people tracking. Next week's the twenty seventh, uh, and update for you in January as far as expenditure.
Really, you don't want to get that too deeply yet? I was like a little longer to take.
Absolutely.
Yeah. He was, you know, yeah. I can do.
Uh, let's see. I followed up, we, uh, we had three applications out pending for the workforce board for the higher on those program. I followed up with all three and they're not gonna apply, so they would move out. Uh, so right now we have no additional application pending for those. That's the workforce. Um. Workforce boards, higher on bonus program, we still have thirty-one thousand dollars. Available for. Hard to fill, hard to fill positions for, for businesses, organizations, whatever the case, as long as they meet the. Qualifications in terms of weight and. Uh, necessity of that position. Anything else?
Does. Does the county block, can the county use that money for our, for our?
Meet the wage standards and, and, uh. You know, just show it's a necessary position that's been trouble to fill.
So when you say wage standards, what is that?
Uh, it's a median age of the county.
You have a.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But if it's, uh, you know, if you need a heavy equipment operator and you're trying to find one for. Thirty days and it's definitely a position needs to be filled. Then the committee's gonna look at that and say, you know, definitely. Uh.
And who is that?
Uh, workforce board is. You're gonna test me on this. Dale Knighton. From the school. Uh. Lester from the hospital. Boy was on there.
Let me three of them have to replace now then.
What's that?
You have to replace three of them out of those.
Uh, Dale's on until June.
Missy's retired.
Missy's retired. She hasn't told me she's gonna get off of it, but I'm not gonna ask her till she tells me. Uh, Dale, Missy, Carl, a bank. Um. Scott. Roberts from the city. And a business. Oh, Kylie Lander. From Paradise Village Pharmacy.
She's gone too.
Kylie is?
She's no, yeah, she, it closed the pharmacy.
Paradise Village closed?
Yeah, this week.
Really? I just gave them a, a business recognition award last week. It's closed.
Paradise, yeah, they're combining with the other, the other one.
I had no idea. Oh. So. Any of you guys wanna volunteer and serve on the workforce? We the county representative. Dress up.
Nope.
Ree. Just looking around, I'm too tired. And it could be anybody. I mean, just so the county is represented on that and. Uh, we, unless there's a new something to be voted on and discussed. Uh, we don't have meetings. We get an application. I send the applicant out to. Uh, everybody on the workforce board and they come back to you, be very yay or nay funded or adult funded with the information. That kind of thing. That's right. My question's out here. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Get down.
There you go.
No, you're fine. You don't lie. Not true. She does. Compared to what it was, yeah.
We have thirty-two residents. We lost a resident, so we're down. Um, our NCK techs E and A classes started, gay, actually. Um, it's the online part and then they'll start clinicals, um, the end of February. So. Well, they won't tell us yet, but they say it's full, so full is ten. Um, I don't think I recorded this. It's been a couple of weeks. We had our Christmas party at Dawson with the family, about seventy-five people. Um, it went really, really well. I do want to let you guys know, I talked to Kendra and tried to figure out when the windows at Dawson were placed and it looks like they were a year old in August. I do have three of them that are cracked. So I reached out to the contractor that has put them in and we're gonna meet up and see if there's any type of, um, you know.
One to you.
One to you on those. I would read her.
Surely, surely, yeah.
They're single, clean windows. Um, they're cracked all the way across. I have one in a bathing room. I have one in the activities room and then one in a residence room. So, listen to what he says and hope you guys enjoy them. Um, I do want to let you guys know for me, if you guys hear. Um, I do wanna let you guys know, for me, if you guys hear the word Grace Team. It is a um, management vendor that Dawson has teamed up with. January first is when we started that contract. So basically, these guys are out of Topeka. They are family owned. Um, and they specialize in helping independent nursing homes that are not for profits or non-corporate. Um, I had seen some statistics when I went to a meeting and since COVID hit, there's been fifty-seven nursing homes in the state of Kansas that has closed. Because finances, because of cost, um, everything is just outrageous. So we have teamed up with these guys. Um, you know, we educated our staff. They are there for us. They walk beside us. They don't own us, they're not in front of us, they're not behind us, they're beside us. They're gonna help us get up to date with some regulations, um, make sure we're capitalizing on everything that we can. Um, because you know, we want Dawson to exist for the next twenty to twenty-five years. So you know, the board and I, my board believes that we, we need to be proactive and and um, plan for our future. So I just wanted you guys to hear that from me. Um, they don't have mess, like I said, anything like that. It's just merely a vendor is how we explain it. We have three vendors, we have laundry vendors, we have, we have a maintenance vendor, so. Um, yeah, but I did advertise, I am looking for a night nurse, just one to two nights a week. Um, so if you guys know anybody that might be good for it, send it my way.
They said I was working at the grocery shop.
Night should be perfect for you.
Might make a little more money there.
But I'm not, we just keep our heads down and notice the grindstone, chucking on.
Well, sounds good, Randy.
And we weren't able to cut vouchers this, like today, um, but as soon as that check is cut, I'll let you know. One of us can run it up or we can, but yep, that check will be written as soon as we can cut vouchers, so.
Thank you, guys. All yours.
All right. Any other business we need to cover?
Um, I have some new business to finish up on. Um, so Dan did do an updated custodian job description. I included in your guys' packets to review and approve. That way we can put it in our job description binder we have.
So, um, for that, when I redid it, I used quite a bit of the old gussy. Um, I did um, put a, a word in there about responsibilities for MS, public road and bridge, probably count the road bridge. Um, maybe we wanna discuss that a little further? What do you got?
We'll get somebody hired, I thought. See if those are able to discuss that. And I think we'd get the person established and then we add that on.
Okay, I like that. I agree with that.
Other than that, yeah, I approve it. I mean, we need motion on that?
I, I think if we want to review it and update it, you know, add a little
Sure, yeah.
And then we can, then we can do a motion on it. I just wanna make sure we can put it, we have a binder that we keep all the job descriptions in. I think it would be nice to have the updated version in there. Um, so that we can hold off on that today.
Perfect.
Um, and then I did include some bids for shocks for the two thousand eighteen Tahoe. That is the county vehicle that we utilize going to trainings. Um, that's available for any office to utilize. Um, it does need a hub and some new shocks. I went ahead and told Road Bridge to get the hub ordered. Because it was gonna be under the five hundred dollar benchmark. Um, so I had Stephen go ahead and get that. But the bid for shocks looked like it was gonna be a little bit higher than the benchmark. So I wanted to make sure you guys were able to look at it and approve it and tell me who to go with there.
So, I want you to approve Park West.
Oh, second, it's pretty, pretty obvious.
Well, there's two shocks at three ninety-two compared to, it'll be one ninety-six a shock and that's another one sixteen for
Yep, Park West.
All right. And then the last thing I have is the advocate for commissioner minutes for January seventh for you to sign off on Jared. And Ree forgot to update you.
That's beautiful.
Make sure we change it out next week. The only other thing I have is the Northwest Kansas thing and we'll wait for Russ on that, so.
Perfect. Uh, this, this recess until ten forty-five when the barons up.
You're just gonna be blanking off your nameplate gets here.
Just don't come on to.
I'm gonna send Troy a care package of his nameplate and his stamp.
There you go, yes.
You guys getting much snow?
No.
What is a part of it, isn't it? Well, last night we made, phrase, discovered everything, but that is.
There's no. We were at Kansas City last, was it Friday? And yeah, it was, or Thursday, and they're still digging out. One of the nurses said that uh, it was the first day she got the right, driving work and it was two weeks before, you know, the major snow. Two weeks after, it's like, wow. Hot and bad. I'm not used to that. No.
I know your name, last name is Irving, give me a person. Hey, Dan. That's your four, double time. Are you being good? Yes. Good, good. You got a lot of procedures there and take it from a crunch time. Right, you know, most people actually, you don't have that time, you know, they're pretty rough. I'm out of Derby, Hazel, south of which is
Maybe not.
But I was a little snow, you know, a little bit last night, like less than Still got snow hanging around.
Yeah, just a little bit. Sorry for it, did it look like?
Last night I wouldn't touch them, but it's um, they're You, you live in Derby? I live between Derby, Hazel.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, it's kinda weird where I live at. My house got a pageant ladder, this Derby, I'm in the Derby uh, school, so I'm kinda Been out there probably a Where I'm living out for about twenty-five years.
Oh, wow.
Been living in Stargardt for very short. So you've got kids?
Yeah, got three kids. They're all in the house. One, oldest forty-eight.
See, he's thirty-seven. Uh, and my daughter, she's a child, she's been, she's turned thirty-three. And my youngest boy, uh, he is twenty-seven. Spread out there, my, I married, my wife that I married, she had the two kids and I adopted them. Derby is grown a bunch and They, they really need to, I really, another high school.
Right.
But they won't do because of football program.
Then he was one of the speakers at Kansas City, hit the Football coach is one of the speakers of which star?
Oh, yeah, yeah. He's got some burning inspirational, he's I mean, you know, he, he changed over the years. I mean, just like he said when he's talking. And it's all about winning the game and now it's more like building man, right? It's a whole program. Is the
Had the JAC, you can move for an hour's speech.
You know, what they call the cowboy? They're coaching cowboy, so Kevin Chase up there, Chase Fangio. I remember I sent play a form for you, you know, and uh, um, played all the games. My dad, the two of them, I would travel all the games, you know, and they, it was a pretty team. We went up to um, Junction City one night, it was in the playoffs. They were undefeated and we lost a game or so, except there. And of course, Junction City come out of the, the locker rooms up on a hill and they come charging down the hill and that's, I think they, they built new um, stadiums and of any, but back then you come down in there and it's cold. Well, we, our guys were already on the sideline and they's getting ready to, to sort of announce a game. Hey, everybody, put your hands together for your undefeated, ten and oh, Junction City Blue Jays, you know? My dad looked at him and said, that's a kiss of death, ain't it? And I said, you bet, man. I goes on top, he goes, that really chicks me up. And woke up sleeping dog, we killed him. Yeah, did it. Did it, uh, They won, they won state twenty thirteen for the first time since nineteen ninety-four. And that's my son was a freshman, anybody my step here, but They, uh, we went up to Topeka, and one of the days it was like seventy-five degrees on November. We coached, coached Harper, he, he coached, you know, I mean, it's all about details, you know, and, and uh, This is before he kinda changed his philosophy to just that, this first time he ever won the state camp, if anybody's up there explaining um, Shawnee Mission D, so maybe we've been perennial, like three or four years earlier, they were like, you know, and that's, they were, they were in it again. And the whole crowd, I mean, they were just kinda playing ball and just, just all kinds, know what's going on, everything, you know. And our guys took the field after they had done the field and they lined up for the town cities, I mean, and and it's, it's just like a world team, I've been our town cities out there, I mean, it's just like, he expects a lot. Uh, and after they just did what they did, like they were doing the town cities, they shut that whole sideline, their sideline down, it was like all week out. I told dad, my dad said, we just want to fall, we did, I mean, it was just like, that was so plain that I can talk about this stuff all day long. You gotta look for your kids, you know, playing ball and stuff like that.
Right, yeah.
Derby, they had, um, I bet there's four five thousand people on, right? That's it, they, they got here to build town, on that football and everything, they just come around, you know. I always told my son, I said, you know, we
Oh, gosh.
And I said, move across by the field there on, on the pass there, the street, like football field for Derby there. Say, you know, think about it, you got about twenty-eight or twenty-nine more time to come out that, that, um. I said, when they date, Friday night, throw Cause they're gonna buy something else in the Friday.
Okay, Darren, here it up.
You're good.
You're too.
Thank you.
Guys, let me see what, just hand one of you guys to pass around this, the updated version of the city. They have to put that for some cities, but the counties are all over here. There's thirty, I think there's thirty-four on there and thirty-two of the Kansas counties. And you get on the visual, there you go, that's everything. I think when I started, one of you guys, we had fifteen counties, over three years ago, so you can see I'm Not only, um, but majority of it's come through, through hillside, so it's come down through. Obviously, pretty plain, they did do a good job, you know, and, and the service behind it. You guys will be sitting there talking, probably, because they done a really good job, I feel like they showed some support. Um, so, uh, guess we'll get started here. Um, looks good, guys, so far, and I know that uh, we're things meeting, I was going back and forth, I think you're, my, they'll go on your, the main FDIC, you have to get more than fifty thousand, one, you get another account, put some in, okay? So, right there, guys, I mean, I know um, Jared and Jason are pretty much aware of that and how that works. But uh, um, in regards to um, uh, I'll get started on this three years ago, when they were on a fifty cutter pack plan. And uh, so when you pay your premium every month, that whole premium goes to Blue Cross for Shield, or that, or you know, Health, or whoever that is, they'll cross. And that was just, the whole premium goes there every, every, every month. Well, this, this type of planning is going to hide it up from your, keep the same benefits for the employees on, or deductible, things like that, so. But the cost of that plan is cheaper than the plan you was, you had. And so you get the uh, hide that plan, which is here, and the fifty cutter was like this. So that difference in cost between here and here, that's where we take that and put that into reserves. And also, you're gonna pay less for your, the, the cost area, what you're gonna pay for, for Blue Cross. But the difference is what's going into the reserve, the reserve account and you're paying plenty of that as well. And three years, a little three years now, I think, um, basically over two, over two hundred fifty thousand dollars, I don't think that's exactly our risk right now. But uh, um, I don't have that with me, but they, I know we bank it now too, you start doing that, so.
Who takes care of the reserves?
Now, we, we do, um, basically, uh, um, we can't get any account unless we talk to them and things like that. But we do all the reserve account, I think it's farmers, banks, and trusts, they're in uh, in great bin. When you start doing that, uh, I think up till, what, four, five months ago?
Yeah, it was the, in September, we had them take over the reserves. We were doing it, we were housing it here. Um, and so essentially, in our system, we would have a, a reserves account, then we had a health insurance claims account. So to figure out accurate numbers, we had to take this, less this and add this, and it was just, it was a lot of work. Um, and so we asked them to take it over. Um, and so it's been a lot nicer because we get bank statements and so each Thursday, they have to ask, you know, they send us over, here's what your weekly claims are. Can we get a signature that's approving that we take this out of your account? I sign off on it, and then so I have that record and then I get the monthly bank statements to reconcile it back to it. Um, way easier, way, way easier, so.
Just like to, if there's any other, the end of services that they can provide or do for you guys, if there's something totally crazy, Ken, or that you're hired, you want, just get, just ask a question for your campus, yeah, we do that part, so. Their GPA, their part of history, that's what they do. Uh, so, that's been good. If you got that good, good uh, uh, reserve funds, that's, you know, added up over time. Again, that money wouldn't be there if we didn't do what you're doing.
What is a lot of the county, other counties seem to do with the reserves?
Well, you, funny question, um, there, they uh, uh, they do a lot of different things when they get to where the level that they feel like they're pretty well set, and you guys, we wanna get you up to a hundred and twenty-five percent, you're probably getting pretty close. Um, but you guys, as a, that's our first goal, is to get you a hundred and twenty-five percent funded. And so that means if everything went to pot on your major medical, something crazy happened, okay? So you as a, as the team, in the mission board, that you guys have decided, what do we want our number to be? Okay, the cut of a hundred and twenty-five percent, we want it to be two hundred and fifty percent. You guys decide on that number, how much money you want in that pot. But you can take that money and uh, it's, it's your money. It's not mine, it's not for your claims. Um, you guys can, the first thing is to enhance your Um, you guys can, the first thing is to enhance your benefits for employees, that's the first thing, take care of the employee, that's what you're doing.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, get that where their benefits are pretty good, um, and you can, you can enhance some of those benefits, they may be. Uh, I mean, you guys is deductively pretty low already, um, don't want to take that to zero, I wouldn't advise that, but, um, I know it'd be, everybody'd be happy. But I think everybody needs to have a fine, too, so, but you can take, add benefits, um, you can either enhance them by taking some cost off, or you can add benefits to your benefits, um. Portfolio, if you will. Then, so you got that set, you guys may have a project here in, uh, for the county that maybe you haven't had the funds for. Um, and maybe instead of funding it every month, your major medical, every month, take the money, say it six months or nine months, wherever. You take that, when you put in the fund for reserves every month, put that into, um, your, another project. Um, and then, once you get the project where you want it, come back and start funding twelve months out of the year. So, it's the same money is going across, but maybe you don't put in for a major medical, you take six months or nine months or three months. Decide to use on a project, then you start funding, because if you get, if you got where it all goes, goes to pot and you just paid for, you got some. You got some fluff under built in, some security there, so you can do some other things.
Other one, you're saying, probably, open, rated, whatever hours.
Whatever you got in three months, yeah, so, um, if that's totally a view, um. Again, that's, uh.
Terrible, so you're backing insurance on, uh, employees, taking part of the pay or?
Yeah, there's, there's, you guys can create with that, um, whatever you want to do, though, but that's, uh, I would always, there's always, uh, when we. When Freedom Plans, you ask that question, you know, like the client will say, hey, we, uh, we're thinking about doing this, how do you feel about us taking this amount of money? Going this route with it. And they always go, hey, they kind of do the, you know, they look over, make everything, make sure everything's looking good, they say, we agree with you, you could do this. You know, it's your call, but it's always nice to have the other guy, hey, take a look at this, we're thinking about it, you know? And, uh, they'll work with you and things like that, so. And there's other counties, there's counties, guys, that, uh, they've got some pretty sizable amounts in the reserves. That have done some, about every year, they'll do something like that, and maybe, take six months and then take six months, they don't, put it in the, uh, medical side, they do for, for a project. Um, and they got, I mean, these, some of the ones I know, they're, you know, they're like six or seven hundred thousand dollars in reserves, uh, stuff like that. Um, you got some times out there with over a million dollars, make sure, I can't tell you who they are, but they accept size, that's their decision, not everybody has to do that proud, so. Okay. So, on the third page, guys, and this, this is your free and fullest plan, this is the plan that, uh, we designed underneath the high deductible plan. And with your benefits there, you got five hundred dollar individual, one thousand per family, and projected so far, um. And this is on September, well, we've got this here, but September twenty-fourth, when you guys renewed. Um, but projected for the year, it's supposed to be around like million three. And, uh, it's actually, actual through, uh, the thirty-first of December, on the right-hand side. You're running about two point nine five percent under the projected right now for actual, so, um, it's looking like it's doing pretty good at this particular point. Um, I still feel like, uh, your reserve amount going in is gonna be good, sufficient throughout the year, you might go, there's still be under, I think, throughout the year, let's. This next page, I know that Andrew gets this, or her group gets this every month, um, but it shows you the number of employees. And then the first column with that three hundred sixty-eight thousand, forty-three dollars and twenty-seven cents there for the first, uh, four months, and this is a four-month guy. Usually I try to do three months with you guys, but the last of the year gets crazy for me, so I, they picked a three month too, and I said, nah, can you put four months? Can you get up there, change, let you see this, so, um, so we put the four months together there, so. That first is the illustrative rate, that's like they do now, bought the cookie cutter plan, and so that's like a comparative plan, so we start with that. And that's how you fund it, so basically, the total illustrative rate is what you actually are paying for your insurance on the, um. The Freedom Choice Plan, okay? So for the four months, you're spending two hundred forty-seven thousand, twenty-nine dollars and thirty cents. The T P A and S thirty B, that's be gone to Freedom Claims, um. The, the fifty-two times, I think fifty-two times your forty-seven and forty-six, whatever, I think that's what I'm.
That is correct.
It is correct, yeah, fifty-two. Now, after next year, you know, go to fifty-four, they actually started ten-one this past year, if you guys read before that, so we kept going to fifty-two. Okay, um, the, uh, monthly prescription claims pay, you got twenty-four thousand, or let's see. Monthly medical claims pay, you get forty-three thousand, four ninety-one dollars and seventy-six cents over the four months. Monthly prescriptions claims pay, you had twenty-four thousand, six twenty-seven, thirty-two, over four months. Uh, the risk management fee is what, is a five percent on whatever's left, as for free plans, it's a percentage of savings, what how that works, remind you guys. Um, that's every month standard, okay, so if you have reserves built up the month before, we only look at each month by itself after claims are paid, keep the five percent on you, okay? Um, your gross savings is the forty-three, seven, two seventy, forty-nine. And your net to the far right is the forty, forty-three minus that two thousand one hundred sixty-three, seventy-four, gives you the forty-one thousand one hundred eleven fifteen. Um, so, basically, this number is positive, or here you guys are saving, okay? You're in, and you're, like you said, you're over two hundred fifty thousand now in your payroll service, so, that, you're adding one to it. The next page is in one of, it's one of the reports, we have two different types of reports, but this first report is top benefits by location. And to the, on the left here, it says Grand County P P O plan, and this is the, uh, um, thing you guys are on here, so. Uh, it shows on the far right, painted by the plan, that's, you have your, your largest claims or prescription claims, it's the R X claim. And twenty-four thousand, six twenty-seven, thirty-two, and the plan is paid out sixty-eight, or paid sixty-eight, one hundred nineteen, or sixty-eight thousand, one hundred nineteen dollars and eight cents. That's just for the top benefits, okay? That's for what these benefits are for left. The next few pages, it's a different type of report. It just breaks it out into, instead of the top benefits, we break it into the top providers, and it's like, uh, probably four pages of this. But, this shows you the, uh, the top, um, chart, which is your, um, prescriptions, which is the. The pharmacy business manager, the three complaints you like, it's called P and K. And that twenty-four thousand, six twenty-seven, thirty-two, that's the, your highest claims in the goods, you know, if it's lower, they do it down, uh, in descending order there on the cost. Um, again, that twenty-four thousand, six twenty-seven, uh, prescription plan is the same on another report, it's just broken out a little differently here. Um, and I didn't see anybody use anything like H twenty, I didn't know anybody in this country, if there is. Reach out there and they use H twenty, the H twenty for Blue Cross Blue Shield, that it's not in that working out for Blue Cross. But then, I didn't, I went through this report and see somebody use that, you shouldn't do, but you have to, just to be aware of that. Um, then vocal pages, same type of four, this is, it leaves off four months. Yeah, this is for four months, correct, get from September to, to, um, yeah, it's a proper one. Um, you can see in the bottom of that, on that last page here, sixty-eight thousand, one hundred nineteen oh eight is the same amount that you have on your, on the benefits. This is just breaks it out to different, uh, on your, uh, providers there, but it matches that number. Let's just, what this page here is talking about, different types of, um, your brand utilization, I mean, your generic utilization on your prescription drugs. The best way to look at this is just flip the page, they've always put this page in here, but to me, that's worth a thousand words right there, just to show the pie chart. Um, on your generic drug utilization is the blue area on the left pie here. That blue area, you guys, as employees, have been very well in regards to, um, getting, utilizing generic drugs, so. Your eighty-nine point nine percent of your drug usage is being purchased is, is the generic side, so you guys are right at the ninety percent now, which is really, really good. And then, uh, oh, here's the cost pie, so, majority of the cost is a, is probably a single source type, uh. Drug that you can't get a generic for, those are, that's where it's a little bit more expensive, and you see how the break out on the cost are there, so. On your last page, as you've done it, this, guys, you always, always have that in the back of your, your reports, that, uh. The benefits for the employees are this column right here, and, uh, um, the five hundred dollar singles, thousand per family, and then there's twenty percent co-insurance up the next thousand. For the single, and the next two thousand per family, and then, and all the, uh, different co-pages there, but, uh, this is what your benefits are for that. Any questions? It's done very well for you guys, um, is there anybody having issues, kind of things, well, I think this year you guys have enough, they use the pharmacy, just zip it up, so.
They large together or younger, I'm not sure.
Yeah, well, we have one box I didn't have.
Yeah, well, this happened yesterday.
Well, that's obviously a pharmacy that, that took a conversion on, it's usually like the two cars, obviously, because.
Yes.
You got the, the lady was here, is that the person on lady?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so they use this, and then, uh, um, did the school get on board?
Yes.
Okay, so, I didn't get that.
They did, I gave them, um, direct information, they came and asked me of the information.
They responded, and I didn't know anybody was working on that, so I centered the information, so we had both, we had Freedom Plans and, uh, going to the same place, so. They're, they're, you go, hey, that's, that's, we that.
Yeah, I, well, I gave one board member your information, I gave another board member direct information, because he was an employee for us too, and so.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Well, you know, it's good, guys, they're gonna have a, that'll be good for them.
Yeah.
Um, so this helps for other down the road, so.
Yeah, sure.
Guys, I don't see anything really out there in the market right now, but what you guys are doing, if, if, if there's type of income back to the. They could go out there, maybe, say that they are, but I, I don't see them doing what this is, so, you guys have made that decision, I promise, three years ago. Um, gonna do a decision different, so.
Yeah.
Appreciate it, guys, appreciate the business.
Absolutely, thank you, Darren. This is a lot of stuff for me, it's kind of, yeah, so if I have some questions and I can get hold of you.
You got on the card, anybody else need one of my cards?
I think we got one right here, actually.
Yes, if anybody's coming through and asking. Yeah, you got an extra.
Yeah. Les, you're up.
All they got, I just want to give you guys a, a jail, that's all I have for you.
Tell what?
A tour.
Okay.
Basically, what I need is.
I'll just lock me in, I'm overdo. You wanna do that?
Yeah, absolutely, we have, we have somebody coming in at fif, at eleven fifteen, so, I would say, yeah.
Well, I do want to, to ask you guys, Les, would you like to afford somebody for your, for your department? Would you say, look at that, when somebody from Grand County, or whatever, who's even up, uh, collections, basically?
Generally, it's somebody who's, has a background in that. So we just weren't sure if you.
Just the last time. Mole it over, yeah, just.
Yeah, Paul Paxton, I've been it forever.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd say Robert Paxton is not interested in serving, I mean.
He's a retirement.
And he can think about it, looking over.
Yeah, think about it.
Let's see if we get a deputy, maybe they.
Okay.
Got any application yet, or? Well, we got, we got one today, we did have some, but they didn't think they needed to move to Grand County.
Oh, no.
They wanted to let him walk in.
Okay, well, let's go do it to you too.
Do we get the product?
It's probably pretty good.
Hey, so, ask, can they look? We have half an hour. So. I feel. So, they don't need to have the law. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so I'm saying at first he's going to send me to the law, I would give him one head up. But uh he needs to see the other um. Other one, I know. Yeah, should I? Okay. Okay, cool. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Usually the charge is uh. Yeah. Or. Okay. Okay. Oh. Yeah. It is, yeah, I don't know. Here's really a problem. So here, oh, okay, okay, good. Okay, what is he, anyone here? Yeah. Appreciate. I'm gonna have to make your that period. That's good, it's a key that it ends the business a lot. Yeah, and I'm saying, yeah. You said you want to say hello to your dad. Yeah, I know, yeah, I know. Uh, yeah. Yeah, I bet. Yeah, yeah, I did. Yeah, sorry for for I was excited. You got now it's a new center. Uh, no, I. Yeah. In the vision, but. Same fine, but it was filled off. Is it us?
Plus us. The guys are in the back taking a tour of the jail real quick. They might have locked them up back there, I'm not sure.
Same off.
Yes. Yeah, it's warming up out there.
Well, I mean, that would treat as the defense law for strong, it's kid those drive through. I think it's a nineteen above. Just four of them, I can't work, but seven.
Oh, it's seven, not negative seven. It feels like seven, not negative seven.
No, it was negative seven.
Mm-hmm, it was.
It feels like twenty four, sort of seven.
Yesterday was. Yesterday was so cold. Cold, yesterday was horrible.
Down to thirty.
My suburban didn't want to start either. This morning, it said it was cold. Yeah, I don't know what they're looking at or doing. Pretty neat back there, isn't it?
Oh, it's pretty neat.
Pretty neat, I went back there last week.
That's shocking. Wayne, I guess you're up, buddy.
I don't have anything. In reply to your deal, I haven't got all my. John Derman's gonna blow it, we've got to count this again. Good, I turned it off and moved. Like second year, did the Chinese come in there? You know, she was like that in a picture of it.
So when we were talking about having some of the last week about having coming bids on.
Oh, at least on the lease.
So we kind of have an idea if we can, if we need to produce stuff.
The uh John Derman, so he had no, but he advanced to the lease and. And I guess I don't know exactly how the work is, but at the end of the day, if we're gonna purchase it, you gotta make a big billing payment after. And Kat didn't have a call, there's a lease, they called it rent.
Rent.
And they really charged some of that, one of them, you remember that one? It's ten thousand dollars a month, we either you put one hour or you put five hundred. And then after we were done, and our our thought tour was to rent it for six months and if we had a life machine or if it has problems, then we can give it back. That that was sixty thousand dollars and then what they like to tell us was that it was mine, over nine thousand dollars interest, they charged us on that. So the sixty thousand went toward the line machine.
Right.
But the nine we we lost out, so.
So then we put that we do a capital outweigh play so that we have something that. We can start building something for.
They have a special.
Yeah.
Others do their special written, their special machinery.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they're. Years ago, the idea was to, like, if I have a hundred fifty thousand a year, that money, when they have a question chain, I'm not sure how that transfer deal works, because like, did you, they transfer half the money? In the special machinery, but I don't know where the other.
The other half was a special written bridge.
It went to special. And that's, that's more of a bridge, if we have to.
Right.
If we get a grant, it's eighty, twenty, or or like when we have a letting, we use quite a bit of money out of it.
I think it doesn't, million dollars a night.
You wanna know how much is in each one, I can go run the report like us.
But.
And we did, yeah.
A bridge for us a lot.
Oh, my God, yeah.
Well, a lot of the bridges we all do like, wouldn't walk bridge. So we eliminated the, well, they washed out and we put ten foot diameter pipes. Which was.
Twenty thousand dollars.
Twenty thousand dollars, well, yeah, just because I had insection. But that's still a bridge with open. So it's been twenty thousand dollar pipe.
Well, when we were, I went to that um this last week, went to the budget uh class for an intermission, which is, one of the things that they all kept personal was um capital improvement. Um fund, that that you, that you take some of that money and put it in there so that we can, you know, build it to a point where we can do some stuff like that. I don't know, the special improvement fines, machinery fines, but these types of things, we could put that in front of capital improvement. But every single one of the channels, you know, we have that. So I don't know what that means or what we look into that a little bit further or whatever, but.
There are different ones. Yes.
Probably your biggest problem with that is, I don't know how much money you're talking, putting in there. But like the new machines, three hundred twenty thousand dollars, you're not gonna buy that much equipment if you buy it.
It's gonna have to be slow, yeah.
Yeah, we need, we need to start in some way.
Yes. Or li- or looking at the different options, getting something that's just a couple of years old, you know.
Yeah, no, I I think we need options to see what.
Absolutely, absolutely, we need to look at all options.
Use drivers.
Yes.
For a third of the month.
For a third of them, yeah.
We had some trouble with some of them, most of them.
We've had to refill the time, we're still probably ahead of the deal.
Right.
But there are some counties, they they put them like on seven year deal or whatever, after seven years they get. I don't know, the cat and them guys give them a heck of a buyback on.
Right.
But there's a drum I have.
The last thing was why you're connected to Morton County.
Yeah, that was.
That was a, they bought a new one, that was a lease they had, that was a.
They get new ones. Every, I don't know.
For a while.
But they got me the oldest machine, basically, it was, you know, well, two thousand, oh man. Which it's, it was okay, but it doesn't have rippers on it, which a lot of guys don't know why ever greater needs have roof yet. It's handy when you got it, and it's also has a counter round, it's a lot of weight hanging in the back, like we can tradition snow. But uh we have to put a new computer on, you know, and then the new uh, which they say everyone has their, it's all computer. Well, the thing, when we first bought it, it had a glitch in it, and the guy said, we'll just let it warm up, and then it had light on it. For like two or three minutes in summer.
Right.
Well, then it got to where Chad had been going out of food and rude year, and the thing just decided gonna ditch.
It goes pretty fast.
And uh and Puckerman had some, he said the same thing. So we had uh, we did, we we just, I think they might have thrown, we had to put a new computer.
Oh.
On clearing, which wasn't big, it was comfortable, nine thousand, so. But we only give, what, seventy two thousand for that grater, I bought it versus three hundred seventy thousand for the old.
You're still running.
Oh, yeah, it's not this machine, it's new to them, a lot.
We just bought that one a year, yeah.
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 Yeah, it was a year ago.
Only I'd like to see too, we advertise for help out there, and we can, we can see the applicants, you can see that, and see what we did, because a lot of people are gonna retire.
So what are you gonna do about the CEO?
Well, maybe they have it, whoever applied, they already have, you know, two of the order.
Do you have one guy I think that's interesting to come back, I'm not gonna say his name out, just he's worked. He has a lot of numbers.
Have Ken put it on Facebook.
And also that uh you can put it on there where the money to apply, you get extra money to uh hire on bonus. We can, we can work that in there too, hire on bonuses for people.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Talk about that.
Yes. There's nothing, I mean, I don't, nothing would be wrong with that, that I know of, so.
Never done that.
Well, you can, there's, there's a lot of people that retire or have retired. Also on some agenda for next week, talk about the overtime. Every day being paid an hour overtime instead of losing it all, you pick a day off.
Hmm, did you do some research on that?
I told, makes it, there's no problems with that.
Yeah, we'll put that on the agenda to talk about next week.
Longer paying, being paid for the hours they work. Is that fair or any way you can put information for us to take a look at?
Yeah, we'll get the number in the chat.
Call Reagan, give us some more information too.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'd like to do that before we talk about it.
Let's, I think, next week.
Yeah, that's what I'll put down. Oh, perfect.
Before you put anything on Facebook, I think we have a printout.
Like a job description. Yeah, that would be easier if you guys just emailed. Like a job description to me, and then I could put it on the Facebook and the website.
And we definitely need to do the sign on bonus thing, I think. Because I might get three thousand dollars somebody signing on, you know. And that's just through Daniel, what Dan deals.
Yeah.
Well, and I, I don't know, I'm not sure if what he's talking about has stipulations, like if they have to, you know, so we need to know more about that from him.
I think we got it.
Reloakey, I think they, I think there's. Yeah.
Yeah, the stipulations, I think it'd be well worth looking into.
Mm-hmm.
Did you throw about the lower rate and never the.
No, full, that's just a bonus, it's same rate, just bonus, if we can make it work.
How fair is that?
Way it worked all over.
Well, tell them to quit and replant them that. Yeah, it's just to try to, it's just to let the grant free money for us, and if we don't do it, somebody else will.
So while we're waiting, um I did have a call about Penelope Road, their change to work to Tel Aviv, they can't keep picking up on it, they took about all over. Uh, just got it this morning.
I know it's bad, can I?
I don't know. Um.
Do you all got?
Old road? It just said Penelope Road, and they talked to you and they just sent me a tip. So. How you guys, how you guys, you go out and look at the road, we have complaints. Yeah, I might make a little trip out there and look at it.
Thank you, Chris.
Had a lot of time with Ryan driving the road off my way that day, just I don't forget about it in here, get a complaint. Okay. When you know, here for that. You back to two eleven?
Three hundred, three thousand, thousand, thousand.
Just barely broke in.
They hardly even start, I see four of them.
That's a shit.
So long and long. Good, special route, so this one is for, makes it for bridges, the one at the most in it.
Sorry for me.
At one time, we were gonna try to build that special bridge because of pit and bridge out here, that everything. Need to be replaced with this leak.
We got this. It's more than that, especially bridge.
Third bridge.
I thought there were more than that. Just to meet some of the out there.
Isn't that just, just a bridge or something?
That's it, special bridge.
Is that also on a cash fund, is there a cash fund?
I'm looking.
Because at one time, that passion for pride, then we took some of it out, buy that working. Now pay. Refinement. We put it on like a three year payment, it's, it's paid for now.
Yeah, I knew it was, was it six hundred some bound and all?
Yes, six, six. That was, that was good. That's. So it wouldn't start it then. It's not the constant best, yeah. The down is a lot of the page, that's what we got now, which is, that's the transfer. On the ninety seven.
Yeah, I was gonna say, this is through December of twenty twenty four, because our books are not rolled over to twenty twenty five yet.
We got transmission out of that one group, and water brought standing. And they love, but we'll have the amount of transmission on that stand, hold it, and they'll still stay in it, it's very good, thank you, Steve.
Yeah, just look at, look at the options, and, and, uh, I don't think anybody doubts that we need to update. Just to see which way is best to do it.
This is what we like about transmission. I hit that one up, it's a cow.
Is that first time you all picked one?
No, it's second, second.
Thinking of the zone.
Ben held up. And Ben's good. And it's like in the day. Should take all the reading and all that bad stuff off.
Last time I was out there, I didn't, have you guys got your doors put in yet?
I have. Cause I really don't wanna come back to it now.
No, not that stuff.
Through the side of the transmission, it's pretty sound, yeah. It's probably, the doors probably just fall.
Like, we're not, we're not, um. That's to rebuild it.
We know that dual sack, we've got that greater lift, they got front of that, so we need to pull that transmission out and tear it apart. See what's inside, but maybe they're not all the time. Just. I don't think that transmission running down. Why? That's why they're, the fire was all up on the engine, above the transmission. That's the.
I would say I might say the same.
The only thing that I see that you said would have like the million in it was the multi-year capital improvement.
So you do have a cap one.
And I think it's just like a county.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The only thing that I see that would be for you would be road and bridge, special road and bridge. Special machine. There's only three out of every one. We're not finding another one that. Thanks for sending Steve to take care of that Impala tire. Appreciate that. I know.
It was half white.
I know. I had seen it when I, I had taken the Tahoe and I'd seen it, I just hadn't called you guys, because I figured you guys were busy.
I thought the one on the other side, but mother, I don't think it's a work, but the one, and I feel near the other side.
Yeah, he showed up, I said, what are you doing here, I need the keys.
Speaking of, I think if we're doing the shots of the bid, we should do the, we'll assemble all as one, too, to see what S and W is most, what Carquest has, and see who's cheaper. That's a bid on that, if we're gonna do it all one time.
It probably is already ordered.
Hmm.
It's already ordered.
I didn't see the, he's got the new hub somewhere, in real areas.
And you still talk about the hub assembly or something, and that's fair.
I don't know, I, I, it's over here, if I can earn eighty bucks for a wheel, for a hood.
Mm hmm.
I didn't see these prices.
We should see, if it's a big difference, I'm proud to give everybody a chance.
Mm hmm. Yeah. Yeah.
I guess, from that, always in the back, it's a big difference.
Yeah, I'll have, I'll have Steve price the hub too, from both places.
Do that vehicles get used a lot?
Uh, the Impala does quite a bit, the Tahoe, we take typically, like, up selected officials use it, or department heads use it when we go for trainings. More so, so it doesn't go as often as the Impala.
We don't have enough tank anymore, maybe, maybe take down the building to, say, good life, brand.
So he said if the tires went flat again, that's what he was gonna do?
Is that what I heard?
I didn't look this morning.
The bad part, does that have a, air gauge on it, on dash, tell me if it's, got a little tired?
Mm hmm.
You gotta say the bad part is if you don't look for the place, you make off, driving three hundred miles to the.
Right, yeah, and the Impala, normally that's just Dan driving it, Dan's, drives that all the time. The Tahoe is what we, we typically take, so. Yeah.
Well, you're always gonna have the public road, and then medium, I don't know, maybe, and you'll.
But it is.
Well, yeah, today, it's like you got double that, and then.
Well, you got, we don't have to meet till one o'clock, right?
Right, first one's at one.
Well, I'm not picking a good, fair enough for that, try to keep the road.
I don't blame you.
Well, that's why you stop in the lane right before.
You can take the Tahoe out there.
If you don't want to really pick it up, I'll just go to the mall. Thank you for the invite.
Well, thank you, Wayne. Any other business, Kendra?
I don't have anything. Brandon was just on the phone, and Crystal was the one who was doing the LEPP, and she was wondering if she just should voucher it to herself, unless somebody else has. Is she gonna do it?
She won.
Can't voucher it to herself, and she's not gonna do it. Thanks, Wayne.
Thanks, Wayne. So if she's wanting to do it. I'm guessing she's doing it, that's why she's.
Yeah, I mean, I think she definitely did, needs to get paid to do it if she's doing it, but.
Wait, so you can get somebody hired for you start all that first?
Like this month, she's, I think she's asking who to voucher it for, for this month. Cause I'm doing payroll.
Reversal, right?
Mm hmm.
LEPP.
There are all these different people in the town. You go around, right?
I don't even know anything about. Um, so each month, we pay Crystal and Brandon Born a hundred fifty dollars a piece for the LEPP. And Crystal's no longer working at the health department, so Brandy was wondering if she needs to voucher it to herself. And I said, well, if she's doing it, then absolutely, she should get paid to do it.
Yeah, she's doing it.
Yeah, that will work this month, and the next one.
Yeah, until she hires somebody on.
That was, yeah.
I think that's, that's appropriate, right?
I don't know, I think they'd actually do it for other people too. I may mail all about, I wish I.
Yeah, I know.
Never knew vouchers and seen other people's names in different towns, oh, it was LEPP or what, I think it was. They do.
But yeah, Brandy's doing the work, yeah.
That's, that's why I said, she's doing the work, absolutely.
Yeah.
Otherwise, yeah, that's all I have.
Okay. You don't need a motion on that or anything? There, okay, I'm, I'm, are we in consensus, them, yeah, yeah, okay, well, I'll make a motion to adjourn then.
Later. What time we gonna be back to? One thirty, is it?
One.
I got time to haul in the water.
One thirty.